Meeting to order of the Cambridge Board of Trustees, our meeting of March 11th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Trustee Breiner.
Here.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
Here.
Here. If we could stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lisa, status of the posting.
The agenda was posted in the upper lower level of the community. It's on the Cambridge Post Office and the Village website. If you'll take yours and pass them down.
Okay. All right. It sounds like this meeting has been properly posted. We'll move on. Public comment. I see three folks in the audience. Chris, I'm going to ignore you because I don't think you're going to have public comment. But would any of the other three, do you have anything you want to say?
I do. Just a few minutes. A few time, please.
We'll go three minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. I won't even need that. My name is Jana Evans, as you all know, and I am not here to remind you what a hot mess we have with the Fire Commission and everything going on circulating that. I am here to caution you as a numbers person. I am very concerned about any type of an approval for a budget right now. You have no line-by-line item of a budget that we have been used to be seeing for several years of what the actual costs are going to be for the different areas, training, blah, blah, blah. You know, some of the things was, well, that's a fire commission. That's never been a fire commission expense before. My other concern is the wage. I don't know how they can go for the last two years with a robust staff reported up until February of this year and have over 7,400 hours of overtime for the last two years and now magically cut that to less than half when they have hardly any staff. So I'm very, very concerned about the numbers being true and accurate. So I am just here to say there is no way you can do a side-by-side comparison to Deer Grove and the Cambridge GMS based on the information you have so far, and I would caution you to not move forward rapidly because if you do that hastily, we are going to be in the same position that we have been for the last three years with the budget, and we are going to end up with huge budget overruns and snowball effect that has gotten us to the place that we're at. So I would just caution to the wind, take your time. I know there's arbitration and all that legal stuff, which I know absolutely nothing about and I don't care to learn about it, but I don't think anybody should be racing into a budget decision when you don't have factual numbers or numbers that are comparable to other years, and how can they be so different? So I would just caution you to be careful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Just looking at the two of you. I'm not seeing anybody eagerly running up to the podium. So at this time, I will close the public comment. Moving on, approval of the consent agenda. The board minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion necessary? Any questions? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. All right. Going into reports, I just have one item, and it has to deal with the March 6 meeting. Chuck, you weren't here, but the rest of us were. And at that meeting, I must have had about six people, and then I had folks that called me up afterward about the room microphones. And I talked with Lisa about this, and Lisa, correct me, but people couldn't hear. They just could not hear. And so they were in the back, and they're waving their hand, and there were folks that are not public speakers. They were not projecting. They were not getting the message out, and they were talking to us. And so the 60 or so audience members couldn't hear. And I talked to Lisa. Lisa, I think you said that, you know, we had one of the television crews here and...
Not the television crews. We have a sound system in the room. We have not used it in the past because it interferes with the recording from our recording. There'd be interference, and you couldn't hear on the recording. So that's why we haven't used it. In the future, when we know we have big groups, we can see if we can, you know... It's hard, though, because their microphone is there where our microphone is. If the person testifying or speaking, making a comment, so with both those microphones there, there'd always be interference.
Well, this microphone might catch, because it comes over these speakers. So the problem is going to be that this microphone is going to catch the sound that's coming in over the speakers, so then you're going to get the double talk. So that's the problem.
And that's why we typically do not use them during our meetings.
Okay. And it's hard to know how many people you're going to have here at a meeting, because there were more than what I thought there might be. I knew there was going to be quite a few.
You'll get to play with it a little bit Thursday if you're using the microphones and if they're recording, to see how it works.
I don't, oh, I don't know if they are or not.
Yes. Melissa's going to be here Thursday.
You're going to be here for the school board forum?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I was asked to report.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm just bringing it up that we had a number of people talk to me, and in fact, I was having conversations on Monday about this, so I sort of bring it up.
And like you and I discussed, too, a lot of the issue was there was a lot of talking going on out there as well. It wasn't just, it was both sides. A lot of noise coming from there where the people in the back maybe couldn't hear over what was...
Being chatted.
Yeah. So kind of a twofold.
I wonder, I wonder, Melissa, if we can look into a... Because you could get microphones that are very, that won't pick up other ambient noise or will pick them up less. So we could probably play, if we find out that's something we really need, there are probably things that we could do.
That's probably more of a question for Gary.
Right, right, right. We'll work with Gary on that. We can work with Gary on that.
I don't know enough about the equipment to really mess around with it.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's what I had comments from the audience.
Just because I used to work in that, there are Omni-directional and Uni-directional.
Yep.
So if I remember my language right, Omni is many, Uni is one. So you can get them that have a pickup pattern that would be straightforward.
Yep.
If you want, that would be Uni-directional. So if that was that, then it would get off mic a little bit, you're not going to pick up, so it shouldn't pick up.
Okay. All right. So Lisa, you're taking track of this, and I don't know if that means we look at other microphones or Omni or Uni?
I think what we should start with is let's see what happens, how the school board forum is recorded, so we can see how this microphone acts or other microphones that we're using, and then go from there. So we have to have a baseline to understand how the mics are, because I know we have upgraded some of the equipment here, so that I don't know if the mic, if this microphone was one of the items upgraded. It may have been. And if it was, then we may not have the issue we had in the past. So let's see how the school board forum goes, and then we can go from there.
And then a discussion with Gary.
Yep. Yep.
All right. Okay. Let's move on then to item 6B, library report.
So our February meeting was held on the 26th. I think everything's going pretty well. We reviewed some of our policies. I'm happy to report we had a full board, so all seats are now filled on the library board, so we are now in compliance with, you know, right here in Brenner, so with all of the things we need to be in compliance with. So we're going to have a policy retreat at some point yet after we schedule that because we want to go through the employee handbook. That's something that the library thinks is not where it needs to be. We are looking at working with an organization to provide Narcan in the library, so that we will have that available there for people in the community if that would be a need as well. So our director is looking into that for us. Our annual report was submitted, and we're working on getting the drive-up window updated. This is the 10th year that the library is in the new libraries in this location. I know, does it feel like 10 years already?
Yeah, it's crazy.
And so we are going to plan a small recognition of that. We threw around ideas like maybe an ice cream social or something, so you can keep some eyes out for that. And that's about it. And then our next meeting is tomorrow night.
Paula, when you say Narcan, can you just define that?
It's for when people have opiate overdoses. It is the, I think you spray it up their nose, and it brings them back. Chris probably knows more about it than I do.
It's a reversal agent.
A reversal, thank you.
Yep. So it's medication you can use if you suspect someone is having an opiate overdose. Even if they're not having an opiate overdose and you use it, it will not harm them, but it reverses the effects of the opiates and saves a lot of lives.
And don't we have one at the...
We have one at the...
Fire station, too?
Fire station, I believe, yes.
I think, yeah. But we thought, we were going to like verify that, and then like when we advertise hours, you know, we were thinking about making sure people know where else in the community area to get them as well.
Yep.
So we were going to talk to the fire people over there.
Lobby of the fire station.
Lobby of the fire station. And is that open all the time, or is that supposed to be opened all the time? Okay. Because the library, of course, would only be open during library hours, so it would be nice for, as we're advertising that, if we know that one's 24 hours, then asking people to go there.
So, excuse me, because I know nothing about this, and I'm just thinking about it in terms of, we have a concert. Should the library be open so that if somebody is going through, is it a withdrawal?
No, it's an overdose. It's an overdose.
Overdose.
Yeah. So somebody's like passed out.
Okay. You know, is this something that should be done in more sites than just the library?
They are, it's become more popular to have it available throughout the community. Some of them, there's, some communities have almost like a vending machine of sorts. It's free, you know, usually they have it free.
Universities.
And I think, and I think that's what the intent is for the library one. We are, we are, we are looking to put it in a location that is not like in the lobby of the library. It's going to be another area of the library. So if people have that concern, there can be a sense of, you know, privacy about...
Unanimity.
Getting something that they may need, that they may want in their back pocket, depending on their particular life situation.
Correct.
And is there an expiration date on this? And then there's a service that comes in every six months?
The library, who we are contracting with to put it in, and it is who we're looking at contracting with, they provide us, if we ever need resupplied, we let them know. They actually, twice a year, just call us for, if we haven't called them, they call us for no reason and find out how it's doing. We also thought that once we had it, that the library may offer a program, a library program, that tells people how to, how to use it, you know, about the opiates and how they could use Narcan if there was an incident.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So we're, we do the holistic conversation.
So we'll have two sites. We're here, and then we're down at the fire station, and then we can kind of follow that to see if it makes sense.
Can get it at the pharmacy as well, too. It's not, you don't have to have a prescription.
The police have it.
Police have it.
Fire EMS have it.
Fire EMS has it.
Okay. I've heard of it, I just didn't know that much about it, as far as what it did.
I'll introduce you to some of the Saturday documentaries I watch, Mark. That's why I know about them.
It's a good thing, because there's so much...
If somebody's looked over a book in the library and might not know what's there.
There we are.
All right. Okay. All right. Thanks, Paula.
Yes.
Let's move on. Plant Commission.
Yeah, we met last night, and the developers, Todd Nelson and Mike Curl, they presented their conceptual design for nine-to-eleven duplexes in the Westgate Court, so it's just south of Quick Trip. So I could, I could pass this around, just some sketches of what they're looking to do. They look good. So 18 to 20, two units total, priced at around $330 to $350 per unit, and they're nice-looking structures, as you can see. 17 hard square feet, three bedrooms, low threshold, so for elderly, for the seniors, the easy access for them. And overall, the plant commission was in support. It'll fill that need for affordable housing in the village, especially for young families trying to get in for, you know, that lower price point for the starter homes and for the seniors, too. The other good thing is it's a nice transition from that neighborhood. As you move into the business, you know, the commercial district towards Quick Trip, there were some concerns with those residents, and this is probably the best-case scenario for them, having duplexes there instead, because it could have been a factory or anything, that they wouldn't even have to come to the commission. So this is a, I think it would fit nice, and it'll start generating some money for the Tiff District. Some of the concerns are, it's minor concerns, kids running through the neighborhoods to get through school. I don't, we don't really think that's going to be an issue. There's ways we can mitigate that.
Well, there's ways homeowners can mitigate that themselves if people are walking through their yards and they don't want them to.
Exactly. So it was real minor stuff. So overall, support from the plant commission. So next steps, we made a motion for Lisa to work with MSA to start working on amending the comprehensive growth plan, because that would be a change from business highway to either medium-density residential or high.
Or a PUD.
Or a PUD, yeah, exactly. So Lisa's going to work with MSA, and Mike and Todd are going to continue to pursue it, and that's where we're at. So I think it's, it would be a good addition and beneficial to the village.
I think it would be, too, I just maybe take a little bit about affordable, because at...
Well, these days...
That's what I was going to ask you, is is that comparable? I mean...
That is affordable.
That is affordable, though.
Is it?
I mean, sad to say.
Hold on. I don't think it's affordable.
No.
It may be the lowest price.
Reasonable.
It may be the lowest price, but it certainly isn't affordable for most people.
People can afford a $450 home, you know, they can get a duplex.
There you go. Yes. I'll give you that one.
Reasonable, you know. It gives people more options.
Is there any wiggle room from the developer on those prices, or is that something that's going to depend on materials and other stuff?
Yeah. We had, Mark asked them pretty in depth, and they're kind of in the $325 range. They're getting new tariffs every day, so.
Some, some cost savings by doing slabs, not basements.
Right.
You know, so they're looking at, but still, nice features, not, you know...
I mean, they're beautiful.
Yeah. It is a high-water table there, so I would think they'd be able to do the basements. And me, Lisa, Mark, and myself met with them at the village here, like two weeks ago, just to kind of get a, they wanted to get a feel for this, and they actually presented an apartment just to the north of that. So we're looking, if we are going to do a comp, amend it to the comp plan, maybe change that as well, so it's not taking forever. So that's something that might be coming up, something Lisa's going to look into with MSA.
I think the roofs on this were 612, which is a nice pitch, a little higher than normal, and although you got to worry about wind slam with storms. But they did kind of talk about maybe it would be the same model, but it might be tricked out in different colors. So one is blue and one is yellow or something like that. And then lastly, we asked about the parkland dedication fee, and, you know, what is that, $1,250 per unit or $1,500?
$1,250.
$1,250 per unit, so what is it?
I believe.
Yeah.
Maybe 22 units, it's decent.
Yeah. So they'd have some seed money there going in for a little park, so, okay.
To contribute to the parks we have right here.
And then the other thing was the CSM minutes on the agenda.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions here for Chuck? All right. Let's see. Move on. Economic Development. Brian.
We just met at 5:00 earlier today. So we had one major item on our agenda was the room tax, which we voted at the village board last time to pause as a recommendation for that until we could figure out operationally all the different pieces and parts. And then we, on the economic development, sent out letters to the three motel owners. We wanted them to come to it and provide some feedback. We had heard some things about how they'd set rates, different tax times, and different things like that, so that we could work on a recommendation of when we actually implement the tax, and then all the different pieces that have to go out there. We have a lot of communications, there's permitting. Lucy was going through tax quarterly, asked, and all the different pieces and parts to do that. So great debate, great feedback. Tony from the Main Street Inn, he came and went through, so we had a good dialogue about that. We did pass a recommendation unanimously, unanimously, that we start to implement, make a recommendation to the board, which we'll put on the next agenda, that we make a recommendation to start collecting that tax January 1st, and that gives us all the time. And then we'll also have, next fall, we'll have all the paperwork. We actually have a workflow, real easy sheets, so everybody knows exactly the processes they need to do, and put that together, and it'll be in the fall, get that other feedback and make sure everything's in place. So that way, those hotel owners know when they're setting those rates for the next year, that they'll know that that tax will be implemented, and they can actually start putting that in there, so. And that's what we finished up. So again, we'll put that on the agenda for the village meeting next time for that recommendation.
Okay.
Does the village have much in the way of like short-term rentals, Airbnb, VRBO, anything like that, or is that, I know there's a few down in the lake, but I didn't know there was anything in the village.
We actually, we actually did ran through that. So there's some in Oakland, but actually in the actual village, there weren't any that we found, but we did make a recommendation in the economic development that quarterly we do a review of that, because we have reporting mechanisms to either Airbnb or VRBO, and they let those folks know that there's a tax, but that doesn't always mean they know about that. So we will be kind of doing a review of that.
Excellent.
I think Tony said, what, for the month of June, he was, they were filled up or something, and then half in July, and there was a sattering in August.
Yeah, he's really, doing really well over there.
Nice. Awesome.
He's got...
What's, any progress on the mural plan?
That's, we put that to next one. So what we did was we pulled in Ashland, La Crosse, and another city. We reviewed them. We've kind of mocked up what our plan would be, and then what we want to do is do another one pager, real easy. What we're trying to do is make it easy and go to the site, all right, I know what I got to do for a mural. It makes it real simple, and then here's the steps to go and do that. So hopefully, we should have that. Again, we put that on the agenda for next one. We know by summer, we want to get that going here, because I think it'll be a mural, nice weather out there already, so, yeah, that's where we're going to go for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian. Moving on. Joint Law Enforcement.
So we just met just before the meeting here tonight, and it was kind of a packed agenda for a joint police meeting. We learned that Deputy Voice is going to be vacating us, so we will be looking to hire a new deputy. The Lieutenant Moore, who is here, said they had nine candidates that applied, so we're looking to set up interviews for that late March. And then the, we had the four-year crime statistic report that was presented to us, which is going to get sent out to, Lisa's going to get the report sent out. Wasn't any huge anomalies or anything like that in regards to that. Our top 10 calls for service, you know, were not major crime issues. There was a lot of traffic and, you know, agency-assisted, MS-assisted, stuff like that, which was good, so. Anything else?
Couple things I'll add. One thing that didn't come up, they did talk to Deputy O'Connell, who's currently working the power shift. He is interested in coming down to the second shift, so the interview will be for the power shift, the later shift. We are looking at March 26th to do the interviews. Typically, it's members of the committee, but two of, can't attend, so if any of the others of you want to attend, and I'll get those dates and times out, but we're looking the 26th to do. We usually schedule 45 minutes for each interview, giving a half hour for interview time, and then 15 minutes to discuss among the panel, the candidate, and so I'll be getting information out on that.
I might be interested in that.
I figured...
Since I'm retired now.
If you're being retired, you two may not be as interested, so, yeah.
Great. All right.
I've been through that process before, and it's pretty simple. They give you a copy of the questions before each of the interviewees come in. So you ask standard questions across the board to each one, and then you assign a number on how each one answers each question, and then tally it all up at the end, and then discuss it.
And it's ultimately the sheriff's department's decision by taking into account the feedback from the panel, and last time, the panel's top two were the two that were offered the positions.
Cool. Nice.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Public Works update.
Sorry, I remember what I was going to ask. The, the report, are you going to make, can you make that available on the website as well, so that if citizens want to view it?
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Yes. It was very positive.
Very positive. Easy to understand, you know.
Yeah. I think of that, I think that would be, I think our constituents would be interested in seeing that, so.
And I said, it really gave a true snapshot of community policing. It wasn't the big crimes. It was the day-to-day things that happened in community policing rather than in a big city. So it was...
Yeah, it was really positive.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
I think it highlighted you going down the wrong way in Blue Jay.
You know, a lot of times...
I took some getting used to.
Yeah.
Some moon buggy down there.
There's a lot of those out there.
Right.
You know, you don't know that that was mine.
Rumor has it.
Well, I know, yeah, they called up, didn't they call you or whatever?
Somebody told me they said you went down the wrong way.
They didn't have signs up, and so...
Citizens are...
The road was there, and I didn't know, it's just one way, and I was going the wrong way with that little car.
It happens.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Cards and letters from people on that one. All right. Is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Kristen. Public Works update, Lisa.
Tasks accomplished. They've cleaned up and shipped trees that were taken down at both well number three and Veterans Park. They have contacted the DOT to have the right-of-way marked on the vacant lot near Highway 12 and Park Road intersection for welcome signs. The DOT will come mark it in the next month, so they couldn't give us a specific date, but they will come mark it. New tires were installed on the F-450, as well as repairing the axle bearings and vacuum seals. Center court sign has been corrected. Fixed the transmission leak on the 2009 Chevy plow truck. Annual maintenance being done on the skid steer. They're working in the GIS system to kind of clean up the old sidewalk information that was in there, input the new data and working on the priority list for sidewalks. They drained the ice rink and closed the warming room for the year. The Emmetson Center, the community room, is scheduled to be painted. We're able to use the leftover paint from the well project to paint the walls in here, April 2nd through the 5th. And a big shout-out and wonderful for Cody to think about this. The big flag in Veterans Park, they took down during the wind last week. There was a tear in it. The last time we sent it in, we were told that was the last time they would repair it for free. Cody brought it down yesterday to our quilting group that meets here on Mondays and they will.
Repair for us?
Repair the flag for us. So, a huge shout-out and thank you to them for.
That's fantastic.
We will have to be looking at another new flag that will probably come to Plank Commission on it and finance because those weren't budgeted for. A lot of those categories were brought down. So, they're not cheap, those big flags, and we need more than one with the weather and to be alternating.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's different types of materials that they can use. Some are a little more resist, you know, wind resistant, things like that.
And with that being such a big flag and such a high pole, we need the sturdier flags than we do outside the center here.
Correct.
How many people are involved with this quilting group? Do we know?
Probably ten. Ten women that come every Monday and quilt down here.
So they're going to, they're going to get the flag, come in here and then.
I think it might already be done because I saw Cody and I think it was Lee carrying a box and it had a flag in it at the end of the day out to the village.
Oh, they may be, when they came in to set up the room yesterday, they may be.
I think it might have been completed already.
Yeah.
Can I make a recommendation that perhaps the paper would like to cover this quilting group? And just get a photo of them with the flag and, you know, would they be.
They may not want that. I don't know.
Just ask.
Yeah.
You know, maybe one of those feel-good stories.
You know, you could write a letter to the editor thanking them, Mark.
Okay, all right.
I just don't want to volunteer a group of women wanting to have, you know, they may be more than happy to, but we'd have to ask them.
I'm sure they're from various communities around.
Yep. And some are from Cambridge because they come pay their water bill and visit us. They're all very, very.
Do you know who the lead quilter is? What do they call them?
No, it's just a group of women that rent the room every Monday and come quilt.
Well, I will help out and, you know, but I just need to have a number. I'll get this from you on the side. Okay. All right.
They are still working to finishing up. That was what's been done. They are working with Lead Recreation for the final plans and the layout for LBK Park and to determine the site preparation. So we will be scheduling a Public Works meeting coming up sometime in the near future. Compost site will reopen March 15th, this Friday, after being closed for the winter. And brush and compost pickup will begin again the second Tuesday of April. Will be the first and for last year's board's actions, it will be once a month, the second Tuesday of each month, beginning in April.
Did you get a call from a resident about the compost?
Yeah.
Okay. Because they called me and I didn't know. I just knew we had restricted winter hours. So, all right, okay. Anything else, Public Works?
I would just like to add that the Public Works employees will be attending a swaps meeting. It's a full-day meeting slash training in Bearaboo on Tuesday, April 1st. If you're not familiar with swaps, it is the Southwestern Area Public Works Organization. My husband is the treasurer and usually the president and vice president for most meetings because they don't show up. But it's an awesome opportunity. They, when they meet, sometimes monthly, sometimes every couple of months. And over the winter, it was very busy, so it's been a few months. But each meeting, they have a vendor or some type of a training come in and provide a training. They also have like a regular meeting like how we are. They have minutes and they go over reports and whatnot. But it's an excellent networking opportunity for a small village like Cambridge to network with other municipalities and be able to pick each other's brains. What are you doing for this? Are you facing this problem? I don't think we've had a lot of attendance in the last.
Had hit or miss.
Last five years. And my husband touched base with Cody today. They're all going to come. And I asked, I didn't get a reply, but I did ask what the training topic was. But I know it's more than, the training is super valuable. The networking is the most valuable part. That is how you learn who's out there, who you can reach out to. We know we have neighboring communities, but it puts a face and they exchange contact information. And it's just a wonderful organization for Public Works. And so I'm excited for them to get to go to their first meeting.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Lucy. Thanks, Lisa. Anything for Lisa? Okay. Village Office Updates, Lisa.
Closing out, this is always a quick turnaround, closing out the February election, working on the April election. Absentee ballots are being mailed out tomorrow. In-person voting starts next Tuesday in the office. So a lot going on, a lot of notices and all the paperwork that has to go with.
Can people still request absentee ballots?
Yes.
And how do they do that?
The best way is MyVote, the state website.
Got it.
Because then they will send me, they'll make sure their photo ID is on record. They'll send it directly to me. I have one business data to send it out then. They can send me an email I need in writing, their name, their address, where they want it sent, sign the email. But MyVote is a good way because then you're making sure everything is done.
Is it MyVote.com?
Yes.
MyVote.WI.
WI.
You got it. It's My.
MyVoteWI.com.
Thank you. I knew there was a WI. You knew it was a WI. Okay.
But if you start typing in MyVote, it'll pop it up.
Yes. And it's very user-friendly.
Yes. So, in conjunction with the election, our WMCA District Four had training last week, both on liquor licensing and the election. A lot of, this election is unique with all the municipal offices, how we count, write-in votes, ties, the Board of Canvas that we have to do that we don't necessarily have to do for other elections. So, training on that. Working with MSA, the bid is going out for, and it is going out for Spring Water Alley.
Nope, that was me.
Oh, the battery was there. Spring Water Alley, because formerly it hasn't been recorded everywhere as Spring Water Street. So those bids will be going out in April. We'll be bringing that back to the board. Lot of pre-audit preparation, which Lucy will touch on a little more. Lot of stuff going on, couple potential developments, so working with the developers, their engineering firms, planners, so.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting. It's MyVote WI.com.
Thank you. Lisa, just jumping back, on West Side Park, Jay said that the, or Cody, they were draining the pond. Didn't we have some discussion in Public Works maybe about removing part of that clay? Are they going to do that this year?
We have no budget. It was not budgeted for.
Okay.
It's been talked about, but it's not being done.
The manpower, the money.
The money was.
Yeah.
Money and manpower. I think, had you actually done research as to what could be done? Because aren't there a couple, two or three different ways that it could be dealt with? Has that part even been done? Yeah.
It was kind of put on hold, the whole discretionary spending, it was, you know, decided not to.
It's on the back burner for sure. There's a lot, you've got a lot going on.
It's just that it's going to be, I hope for Fire Fest, it's dry down there because it's.
We all hope it every year. Every year, Mark.
Okay. Well, I'll see you with one of those little floaties down there. Okay, all right. Anything else for Lisa? All right, thanks, Lisa.
Lisa, you're going to do the painting down here and then the floor?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's right around the same.
The flooring is on order. I don't have a confirmation on the date on that.
Actually, I did talk to that gentleman and it will be in by the end of March.
Oh, okay.
I thought I told you. I apologize. He came in to deliver the samples.
Oh, okay.
So he said it will be in by the end of March.
End of March. Okay.
And then he said we can, they can install it as soon as the beginning of April, but they're also able to hang on to it for a little bit if we need time to get everything painted.
So Cody worked with Vicki to see when we could fit the room in. The library is going to move one of their storytimes to either the library or the senior room to be able to get this painted, then we'll be able to get the flooring in.
One other thing, is Cody following up with the party that was maybe going to help us with the location of the Welcome to Cambridge?
I just said that in my report, that the DOT is coming to market.
They've got that. Okay. So they'll be taking care of that. All right. Okay, anything else? All right, good. Thank you. Let's move on. Treasures Report, Lucy, you want to go through the checks?
Absolutely. So first bill run in the amount of $29,997.97. And the second bill run in the amount of $17,431.14 for a total of $47,422.11.
All right. Help me out, please, somebody.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $47,422.11.
I'll second.
All right, discussion? Good.
Okay, and are you ready for a riveting treasures report?
Well, we have to.
We have to vote.
Oh, you have to approve it first. Sorry.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. I know Lucy's eager to get.
I am. I'm so eager.
But just hold off. Just give us a moment here. Roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Tom Beck.
Yes.
Crackle.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, bills are passed. Lucy.
Okay.
Hey, this is your time to shine.
This is my time. So, I'm working on final document submissions for the audit. The audit will begin next week on Monday. And the staff from Baumann will be coming in, on-site on Wednesday, March 19th. That is the only planned day for them to be on-site, so they will be doing everything remotely the rest of the week. It is on schedule then to be wrapped up by that Friday, March 21st. I had a meeting with Eric Davison from Baumann on Monday to go over what's been submitted, what else I needed to submit. Vicki has all of her stuff submitted. I have, I'd say about 20 more documents to submit. Keep in mind, it started at like 100. And Lisa also has, I'd say, a good dozen or so documents to upload and they have to have those by Friday. So, fun audit stuff. And then I had a meeting with Brian Romer, am I saying it right?
Romer.
Romer, from Ellers. And I reached out to him regarding the water sewer storm budget. And he's creating a proposal. I will be bringing that proposal and hoping that I have it in place for the water sewer storm meeting next week. And that is to create a budget for that. And he did tell me tentatively, this will all be in the proposal. Most of the water portion is completed already because of all the work that they've done in the past year. So that fee, he estimated would only be about $2,000. He also shared that the storm and sewer portions, he does not think have ever been evaluated financially, at least by them. And so those are, again, this is an estimate and I will, the proposal will all get to you, but just estimate $5,000 apiece. Those will all be paid out of the water sewer storm budgets. And my, our goal is to have that in place this year, either third or fourth quarter. It's not something I want to wait until 2026 to start. I shared that. Again, everything needs to go through the process. It's kind of just my hope. And then he also will be sending a proposal for assisting with the 2026 budget and creating a five- and 10-year capital budget. That is something he did not think that we have ever done from his knowledge. And I believe we've been working with Ellers for a very long time. And so that'll all be tied in. That'll be a proposal. He also stated that the fees, again, he gave me a very rough estimate of $5,000 to $6,000. That'll all be wrapped into the 2026 budget. And then I will bring that proposal to the board as soon as I get it. My plan and my hope is to kick off the budget for 2026 in July. My hope is that we start in July and we are done by October at the very latest. And then in November and December.
Stop that crazy talk.
And in November and December, when I'm in the tax world and the end of the year reporting, I don't want to be worrying about the budget. That needs to be finalized and passed.
I love this. Love it.
So.
Love it. Love this idea.
That's just kind of my, you know, I'm putting it out into the world and let's make it happen. And then my other thing is that the Village of Cambridge's Facebook page, it is up. Please follow, share. I think Derek from our water department is following it and I don't know if anyone else is yet, but.
Is it Village of Cambridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it has our, the symbol.
The umbrella, do-a-day play?
Nope. It is.
The new one?
Yes.
The new one with the little circle and the village.
Yes.
Nice.
The new old one.
The new old one.
So, yes. And I did look at it tonight and I haven't made a post since February, which was the last, about the last election. I'll start to ramp that up with election information with the upcoming election. That is a great tool to reach out. Anything else that you guys would like me to share, please let me know. And we just need to get the message out that there is one.
Yeah, that would be good for people to know. I can put it on the Cambridge site. I'll, I can, because there's a Cambridge group.
Yes, yes.
Put it out on.
Perfect.
To put in that the site is opening and collection will be starting back up.
Oh, yeah, that'd be a really good thing to put on there. And to remind people that it's only going to be once a month now. That would be really important.
So that's the compost site and then the.
Collection starts in.
Collection. Brush and.
Brush. Brush pickup. Brush pickup will be once a month.
And we can, we'll do the, send out the press release with directions that could, we have a link on there too.
Okay.
Lucy, I have to compliment you. You took over an office where there were a lot of open files and information all over. And everything is, it's, you've got a thing on the desk and you've got your easel or on the wall in a couple of different locations. There isn't a loose paper in her office. It is amazing. You've done a great job with that.
Thank you. I have a long ways to go before I'm satisfied or anywhere near it. But I feel like we're in the right direction and I just keep chipping away. And I'm hoping our audit process goes a lot quicker and that they are able to report to you in a much more timely manner. Because I guarantee you, they're going to have everything they need as soon as they request it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Questions for Lisa?
Lucy, I just had one other question. It was, I think about a month or so ago to a village meeting, you had talked about the auditors and some of the fees that we had been paying because we had insulted a number of things. Has, obviously, you're working on a lot of that and getting caught up. Is that still, we're not utilizing that?
We are not using, I have not utilized them for any accounting. We are not using, I have not utilized them for any accounting services whatsoever. So, our balance should be zero.
That is excellent.
Just a couple check-ins regarding audit prep, that is it. Which, those are phone calls, our teams meetings that are included with our audit.
Great.
Great job on that, thank you.
Great. Is the, this village Facebook page gonna be like monitored to keep all the drama? Because the group page, from what I've heard, is nasty.
Yes, so comments are turned off. So, every time I make a post, I have to go in there and put, the only comments that are allowed are from the poster.
Gotcha.
The person that posted, so I put that on. Unfortunately, I can't, there's not a setting where I can just do it all the time, so each time I have to make sure that I put comments are off.
Gotcha, cool.
It doesn't mean someone can still share it and comment on their page, but not on ours.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Lucy. Nice job. Okay, moving on here. New business, 8A, Jefferson County EMS Working Group. Consideration of appointment from the Village of Cambridge.
So, I had received an email. Jefferson County Board approved the creation of an EMS working group to discuss issues that are shared by all EMSs countywide, if there's a role Jefferson County can play, looking for uniformity and so forth, of their composition for representatives from municipal government. They did ask if we would be interested in having a seat at the table. The email came to me, you know, are you interested? I did ask, is it appropriate for a board member to be that member as? I'm not as involved to be part, you know, and they said, yes, definitely, it could be the administrator or a board member. So, you know, to verify that, yes, we would want a seat at the table and if anybody is interested in taking on that role.
Kristen or Chris, either one of you guys be interested in doing that?
What's the?
Once a month?
Once a month. They did not know the times. I don't know if it's day or evening.
Do they know who else is on the board? It looks like they've got some towns, and are they still just looking to fill it then?
Yes, they have not filled any of the positions. They're just in the process of creating the membership. So, it would be one medical director, two county board supervisors, two Mambas members, three reps from town government, and four from municipal government. So, villages and cities.
Who knows if our person would even be picked?
Yes, there's no guarantee.
Because depending on if a number of the other municipalities in Jefferson County say, yeah, we wanna be involved, they might pick somebody bigger than us, you know?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do it. It's just, if it's during the day, it'd be, it would have to be just via teams only. But I can do it.
Okay.
Kristen, if you wanted?
No, you're good. I have my village meeting.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion to that effect then?
I'll make a motion to submit Chris Booneck's name as a possible representative from the municipal government for the Jefferson County EMS Working Group.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, carries unanimous. Moving on, the extraterritorial CSM Highland Road, Town of Christiana, Mr. Chad Jorgensen request.
This is on the agenda last night. Plant Commission, so homeowner looking to split this parcel into three separate lots off of Highland Road. We voted, I made a motion to recommend approve it. Pretty simple stuff.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the extraterritorial CSM Highland Road, Town of Christiana for Mr. Chad Jorgensen.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries. Opposed? All right. And item 8C, recognition of 111 Spring Street as two units for the United States Postal Service.
So, buildings across the street. It's always been a business on the lower level and an apartment on the top. It was recently sold, so there's new owners. They're looking, they went to the post office, and they can only get one post office box because it's only one address. So, they were told to come to the village. What we've done often, and they are supportive, is making it 111 Spring Street and one and a half. One eleven and a half for the upper level so that they're able to get two post office boxes for the property.
What would happen if there was ever a third floor?
They, they, no.
They use units problems?
I was gonna say.
We use rooms here as well in our mailing.
A, unit A, unit B.
In the village, for most of these types, we do have some halves. And we do have unit A and B for some. I asked their preference, they liked the half for the second floor.
I'll make a motion to approve designating the upper unit at 111 Spring Street as 111 and a half.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries. All right. Unfinished business going into item 9A, fire and EMS commission update. Is there anything that you wanna share here? And then we got a couple specifics.
Just that we have a meeting tomorrow night at the, the fire station. I believe it's at 6:00 PM.
6:30.
6:30. And the agenda was sent out.
It's full.
And then it was changed. So, we have a new agenda with a closed session on it. So, it's quite robust. But as for before that, I mean, we had our four municipality meeting, and I'm not gonna rehash any of that. Oh, yeah. Christiana did have a vote in their municipality, I believe it was on Monday, and they voted to go with the Deer Grove option.
And the medical director resigned?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I was just gonna.
Ask Lisa to send that out.
I was just gonna bring Chuck up.
Oh, yeah.
This seems like big news.
So, Chuck, in the four municipalities, one of the action items that we asked all the municipalities to do was to have in, have a meeting to direct their representative on the fire and EMS commission which way they wanted to go. Whether we're gonna go with Deer Grove or if we're going with, if we go with Deer Grove, then there's going to have to be an IGA amendment so that we can allow for that. This, our board voted that night because we had posted it to be able to take action after that meeting. So, we went ahead and voted that night, and on a vote of four to one, we approved going with Deer Grove, is what we're directing Chris to do.
Okay. And Christiana voted?
And Christiana did that on Monday.
In a clarification.
No.
The amendment.
Right.
It's set dollar amount per day for the rest of this year. With the agreement, we will then enter into discussion for a contract for 2026.
What was it, 14, 1500?
Seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty a day.
For roughly 244 days, I think.
Chuck's probably not fully up to speed on the fact that we were informed that our current service is not able to staff at a paramedic level every day. You probably saw that on all the Facebook stuff. And there had been specific agreements that were done through EMS with Ford Atkinson and Lakeside to try and cover those at additional, Ford was at a significant additional cost daily. Lakeside, I guess, was free. But, correct me, 10 days in March, they were not able to cover paramedic?
Yeah.
That's what we knew. So, it averages out to be, with the EMS wages, for two EMTs to respond plus the 53, 84 of Ford Atkinson, it comes out to be about $2,300 a day.
Okay, so 1,700, is that what it was for Deer Grove?
Yeah.
For how many days?
Two forty-four.
Two forty-four.
It's seventeen fifty.
Yes, seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty.
Seventy a day.
A day.
Two hundred forty-four days.
And, okay. So, how does that look for our budget? I thought it was gonna be a lot better than?
It's less than what we're paying now.
Less than what we're doing right now.
It's, yeah.
It's a lot better. Okay, well, that's.
Well, and just keep in mind that this Deer Grove option is an à la carte option.
Right.
Right, so it's, and then the hopes of negotiating a longer-term contract.
And the other thing is, they are going to staff people here in Cambridge. Is the intent with that à la carte option.
Okay.
So, they'll be, they'll be using our ambulance, they'll be using our house.
Sweet. Well, that's huge.
One follow-up, a concern I had. We received notice that the medical director was resigning as of April 1st, which.
Fifth.
Or, April 5th, first is the election, that's just in my mind, which we wouldn't be able to run. There was a segment on Channel 15 News yesterday that bothered me a lot. And I didn't want to reach out to them unless I had directive from the board. They kept saying Cambridge hasn't paid the medical director. It is not Cambridge, it is the Cambridge area Fire and EMS. So, for the general public out there.
I'm really upset at how the reputation of Cambridge is being really sullied in all of this because they call it Cambridge EMS, but it's not. It's the four municipalities.
Not even just Cambridge EMS, just Cambridge hasn't paid the bill.
They did not say the Village of Cambridge, but they did, they just kept saying Cambridge.
And so.
I think a clarification probably would be.
I didn't know if I had your blessing to call and say clarification needs to be made. This is the Cambridge area Fire and EMS commission. It is not Cambridge.
The Village of Cambridge, correct.
As I watched it last night, I was just like, what?
I had someone reach out to me and ask why I didn't pay the medical director. You cut the checks, Lucy, and I'm like.
Yes.
It's the wrong entity.
I would be in support of a clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did they give any kind of a reason for not paying the medical director?
They haven't paid a lot of their bills, Mark.
There's also in the same resignation letter, some pharmacy.
Additional costs.
Yeah, I think it's totaling over $10,000 unpaid.
Every, like, every time, they find more bills that aren't paid.
Well, and I think one of the things that concerned me is it was brought up at the, one of the January commission meetings that the EMS, that they were, had an outstanding bill for the medical director and that they had to pay $6,000, or $8,000, I remember what it was.
Sixty-five hundred.
And they had just paid $6,000, sixty-five hundred, somewhere in there, in December. And I think what concerned me was neither the president or the treasurer knew that they had paid that, but they signed the check. So.
A concerned citizen brought, during the commission meeting, brought that check to their attention, that they had in fact paid it, so, right?
So, if Rockdale, so Rockdale and Lake Mills have to, it's to be unanimous, right?
Well, when, for the amendment to the, it does not, at the commission meeting, to recommend we go with Deer Grove and to then recommend that we do an IGA amendment is only a majority vote.
Oh, great.
Once the, once it goes back to the municipalities because we're amending the IGA, that has to be unanimous.
Okay.
So, it leaves the commission as a unanimous, or it leaves the commission as a majority, but has to leave the municipalities as a majority. No, unanimous.
Unanimous.
So, we look, like, if this all works out, when would the Deer Grove start? April 1st or something?
No, we're looking at March 1st.
May 1st.
Oh, May 1st.
Thank you, the other M, May 1st.
And then, so for this new IGA, we're looking like a fire commission only type of IGA?
No, no.
It would just.
So, one of the things I recommend is everywhere in there where it says EMS director, change it to EMS provider.
Okay.
Because that would be a really simple way to change that.
Right.
So, we're just looking at making a change like that.
Give the authority to be able to contract out for services.
Okay, outstanding. That's all I got, thank you.
Do you know what the Christiana vote was on that resolution, Kristen?
It was two to, two in favor, Mr. Lowry, Mr. Nodstedt, but Mr. Cook was not present.
But two is a majority.
All right.
Do you guys want me to reach out to Channel 15?
Yes.
Did, so anybody, did any other channels cover that? I only watch 15 at home.
Channel 15's been carrying the story.
They've been following it.
I just didn't know if anyone else was covering it.
They've been following it for two years now.
Okay.
Yeah, for a long time.
Okay. Now, we're gonna get into item 9A1, additional first-quarter invoice. Additional assessment is what, $56,000, $654?
Yeah.
So, almost the same as what we already paid in the first quarter. So, with another assessment coming in two weeks.
Have the other municipalities paid this?
Christiana has.
Christiana has? So, additional, almost 57. Were they even properly staffed during that period? Like, what were we paying for?
All the overtime we had to pay because they weren't.
For the previous year?
No, this is for January.
For this year?
Well, the, what was it? The expectation that this is Oakland's portion that they were missing from the budget.
They took their budget snap out of 2023.
Oh, right, so they're. But we did ask at the four municipalities, like, is, what's the liquidity? Or what is the thing? It didn't sound great for the next month or so bills due for them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're negative $27,000 is what was reported amongst others. And now you have the director.
$10,000.
The medical director, that's another $10,000 there, so.
One, two more pay periods.
So, we're gonna have to pay this, we're gonna have to pay this and other amounts eventually. Eventually, we are. We knew this year we were gonna have to pay more than last year because we're four municipalities instead of five. So, the question is, we still don't have a budget from them.
We don't know what the second quarter, right? Is it gonna be?
The second quarter assessment is gonna be the, add these two numbers together. It's gonna be the 62, 62,000 plus the 56,000. They'll just give it to us all in one bill for the second quarter. And then they'll keep asking us for this money, which, again, I have a problem with continuing to pay if we don't have a budget.
Or the service.
Or that we're not getting the service that is advertised. Like, that's my problem.
We might not even have an EMS starting April 6th, well, or 5th. Might not even, we could have the, have it all pulled on us, on the commission, to even operate if they don't have a director.
I've been going around and around on this, this whole situation, how to make it, how to make it fair across the board. And, you know, I thought, well, why don't we take that, whatever that number is that Oakland has, and we split it evenly amongst four municipalities? I mean, that's a little bit more palatable to me, and I think our share would be like $26,000. But you give Rockdale a $26,000 bill, and they're gonna be like, shit, there's nothing we can do about it. But I, to, you know, it's, to me, it's a little.
But I, to, you know, it's, to me, it's a little, it's a little backhanded for one of the lowest-paying entities into, in the commission to bill us, you know, us being the forty-nine percent.
To take it upon-
Right.
-one person to make the decision that-
And I did see this was on the agenda for tomorrow night.
So, I guess, uh, you know, from an administrative standpoint, I'm a little pissed off because of that happening that way, but strictly administratively, right? So, operationally, should we pay it? Yes, we should pay it. Administratively, I'm, I'm not too keen on it because we're not getting the same service that we had in place in twenty twenty-three. And you can't argue that. We have one and a half paramedics, if even, at last report, one and a half paramedics. And again, Mark, if, if my wife or your wife had an issue, we would, we would probably have to call Fort, I would imagine.
I'd put Dean in the car and drive myself to where I want him to go.
Bank of Deerfield, that's all you gotta get to.
Bank of Deerfield? Oh, yeah.
So, it's, it's, uh, it's frustrating, but, um, the argument, the counterargument's gonna be, well, you're getting the service.
But we aren't getting the service.
I think some of what bothers me is, and it goes back to Chris, like you were saying, in administrative. We knew in November that Oakland was out. And there was no budget work in November, there was no budget work in December, there was a rush, 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 rush to put a budget together in January.
I think Sheila Palancas would argue with that.
Meaning what?
She, she started some budgeting.
Oh, okay.
She had started some budgeting before.
I was, I guess, speaking on a commission, you know, level.
She was still on then.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Was she doing a budget for the four municipalities?
She was there when the CPA, uh, started the budgeting for all five municipalities.
Why did we have a CPA do the budgeting?
Why do we have a lady in Ohio do payroll?
I don't understand that either. How, who made that decision?
That's been in place for quite some time. I think that was a Bob Salo decision, if I remember correctly. Although, in fairness at the time, she lived here, you know, at the time.
She was going to work every day, she resided there.
You know, when we had that meeting, it just seemed like, you know, they, Dave, when we asked him, you know, where are we gonna be at here with the expenses, because there should be some reduction.
Right.
You know, I'm, I, boy, I hate this, but if we, if we go along with this and say, well, we're just gonna pay it, that's two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, in addition to what we're already paying. Are they gonna be able to cut this back? I would have thought they, they would have.
That's the thing, because we said, with Oakland gone, it's fifty percent gone, you know, the budget has to be substantially reduced. Chris said it. So, the, but, the personnel has been reduced, either through people quitting or getting fired, but we're still getting billed the full price. This doesn't add up.
So, so real, so real, so realistically, I, I think twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we should have had two ambulances with two full-time crews.
One in a, one, a half a year of twenty twenty-three.
Half a year of twenty twenty-three, is that when we did the contract with-
June or July of twenty twenty-three.
With, that was with the contract with Lake Mills?
Yes.
And they were paying, I think it was sixty dollars per capita-
Per capita or whatever.
For the people in the town of Lake Mills. That was covered from that portion of it, which didn't pay, even though we were guaranteed it would. It didn't pay everything, and so we ended up subsidizing the city of, of Lake Mills for that. Again, my concern is, we've, we've gone down to one ambulance now, and I haven't seen a change in payroll from when we were staffing two. So, I don't understand that either.
It should be a reduction here.
Significant.
So, Chris, it's on there, I, on the agenda for discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty-five budget on the meeting tomorrow. Is that on the proposed budget that is, was out there from the four municipalities meeting? Right, because, uh, I asked for that to be on the agenda because we got a hot-podge, you know, budget, if, if even, you know, what you got was a Excel spreadsheet of sorts, and it was-
The original.
Right. And it was, it was told that it was a draft, or it was, because Alicia didn't wanna send it out at one point, and-
And so, there was a miscon, so, so, the, our board's position on this has always been, we have not had a budget to approve because what they sent us in January, we were told was a draft. That, 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 and so, I think you guys are gonna try and clarify that in the next meeting. So, quite frankly, I feel justified in saying, we can't make a decision on this today because we still don't have a budget from them. No, we'll be meeting again this month, and we can make a decision at that time.
That was kinda what I was thinking, Chris, to give the time of like, all right, because when they put out, here's your payments for the whole year, that was based on that twenty twenty-three and the other assessment, right? If that budget changes, then I would think, all right, if there's a payment for first quarter, there might, second, third, fourth, might be a different payment, right?
And the budget will depend on if we stay with the current EMS or go with Deer Grove.
Correct. And then any other things outstanding, right?
Items that can be taken off if we go with Deer Grove and so forth.
Yeah, but they would do, but I would expect if we go with Deer Grove, whenever that decision is made, a budget adjustment would be made for the third quarter and fourth quarter payments. I mean, quarters, quarters one and two, we're really-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then the other item, the discussion on the billing municipalities percentage, I think that, that's on there too, right?
Yeah, you're not likely to change that though.
I didn't think so, but it is on there.
So, what, what do we wanna do? Do we wanna go ahead and authorize the payment here, the extra payment, and just leave it at that? Make it known that they've gotta have a budget before we go any further? Do we wanna hold off completely until later in March? Or do we wanna drop this number down arbitrarily to something else?
If it was like thirty thousand, that would make more sense to me. With the, you know, with Oakland being gone and, you know, having the one ambulance, that would represent more of what we're, what we're getting. But the full amount, it doesn't make sense to pay right now.
And I think one thing I would like to see before we pay any, you know, I shouldn't say anything, but a, a budget to actual, you know, I mean, we don't have a budget per se, but we need to see January, February, March information.
Yeah, how are we running for the year?
Because, you know, if, if, if we only have one and a half paramedics and we're, you know, getting-
Not for lack of, of asking.
Right.
I've literally asked for that, that payroll information from the, the lady in Ohio. What is, I'm on my sixth time now?
Sorry, Chris, I'll stop badgering you.
It's in the cloud, Chris, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's fixed now, but we still haven't gotten it.
Well, and I think, though, you know, we don't know where they're at wage-wise, we don't know where they're at. So, even if we would, would take their guesstimate of whatever it was that they handed it, you know, handed to us at the meeting the other night, we don't have a true reflection of what that accurately is to date.
Because the outlier is overtime.
Yep.
That's a huge outlier.
Well, and the two, the, the information that, you know, Mr. Heinz forwarded to us was different than the information that, um, Mr. Williams and Mr. Ebeling presented by a good sixty thousand dollars or something like that. So, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm speculating, but I, I feel there's some creative accounting happening to make them look attractive. And I struggle with that.
What was our first quarterly payment?
Sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and four cents.
Okay, let's just, I'm gonna rough that.
It's, it's in your package, you just wanna scroll up in your package.
Yeah, you know, I, if I look at this, um, you have, what is it from Deerfield, nineteen hundred? Is that what it is?
Seventeen fifty a day.
Okay, so if you take seventeen fifty, and we are responsible for what, one half of that?
Pretty much.
Okay, um, seventeen fifty times point five, it's eight hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. Now, there's ninety days in the first quarter.
That doesn't include commission overhead costs, the house, mortgage, the equipment, that doesn't include any of that.
And it doesn't include the, the EMS wage? Or, sorry, no, never mind, back that up.
Well, you're right about the house and the equipment.
Yeah, it doesn't include any of the overhead costs.
I was just going with it.
So, if you're gonna compare apples to apples, Mark, what you're gonna have to do is take that seventeen fifty, times how many other days left in the rest of the year, and divide it, take fifty percent, and that would be Cambridge's. But then what you're gonna have to do is calculate the wages and the benefits and the, um, payroll processing and all that for Cambridge EMS, and just isolate it to that piece of it.
Because there's a lot of, of things that if we went strictly with Deer Grove, there's a lot of those line items that would come off that are currently commission or EMS overhead costs. Um, yes, we still have the house, we still have the, you know, the station, things like that. But there would be a significant amount of line items that would be eliminated from, over, you know, the budget itself.
Well, again, we can either approve it, we can push it down the road until after you have your meeting, or we can come up with another number.
Here, here's my reservation of going into this meeting tomorrow, my reservation of not paying it. If we don't pay it, and we go into this meeting tomorrow, we're gonna be, we're gonna look like the Cambridge that doesn't pay their bills, as News fifteen likes to say. Their argument's gonna be, I know this, it's gonna be, you're getting the service. Now, whatever service that is, is subject to interpretation, right? But, I'm wondering if strategically it's smart to pay this bill so we can pay off our people that we owe money to, medical director, whatever the case is, vendors, whatnot, and until we can, I guess what I'm trying to say is, do we play nice until the votes come in?
I'd be willing to pay half the bill because if, if, I mean, we don't have money in our budget.
Oh, yeah.
And the only reason we can actually pay the budget now, pay it, if we wanted to pay it, is because the tax, taxes have been paid. So, we've got this bucket of money. Quite frankly, that bucket of money has to last us all year long. So, if we pay all of it, so I would rather, if, if we're gonna pay something, I would say, let's pay half of it, which gets them out of the twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven thousand their rears.
That's what they're overdrawn in their checking account.
That's what they're overdrawn, so-
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
But that doesn't cover their line of credit, that does, I mean, not that that's solely our responsibility to pay, but-
A lot of the outstanding bills are last year's bills.
Yeah.
Then, I'm saying, I'm willing to do half of it at this point in time. I don't wanna do more until we get a budget from them. Which they could give us for our next meeting because we eat, we eat twice a month. Where a lot of them, I think, only meet once a month.
They do.
So, it's different for, for the smaller municipalities. We meet twice a month. So, if they, if they actually deliver in the meeting on Wednesday, we could maybe give, we could pay the other half, the, the second half of the month, and they still have it before the end of the month.
I think that's fair.
That's fair. I like that.
It's close to your number of thirty thousand, I think Paul's would be like twenty-eight, five or something.
Yeah, it's twenty-eight, yeah, something.
Whatever.
Yeah.
We could round up to twenty-nine, I don't care. Brian, I don't know, what do you say?
It's a tough call, and it, because I listened and I understand, they have money, right? They're in the rears, and, but all I heard was, we're fixing all these other problems, we're not actually grading the EMS department to serve the community, it's like, we're paying back bills, and we're, you know, all these other things going on, and it's like, I don't know.
We're, we're paying for our membership.
Yeah.
And we're, we're, we decided to go back in within the commission. We're part of the membership, good, bad, or indifferent, right?
I think, I think you're right, Chris, in that going into that meeting tomorrow, if we don't do anything, that's, how are you gonna build a budget if you got communities not paying the bills? You know what I mean? That's one thing too, so, um, but-
It just has to be clearly communicated that, you know, this is twenty-nine thousand, and there isn't anything else coming until we have a budget.
It also sets a precedent, we're not agreeing to all those quarterly payments and those amounts. It's, there's, where is the budget again? We've asked how many times, so they need to-
We can take a hard line and not pay a dime until after we get a budget, which is totally fair and understandable. But, but I think, you know, for, for going into this meeting, it's a show of, of good faith, I guess, from Cambridge's standpoint, that, uh, we, we want to try to help out as much as possible. Again, we, we are getting a service. What kind of service it is, it's subjective.
We can, we can take the stand if we don't want to pay for our second quarterly bill, which we're gonna be getting soon as well. So, I mean-
We took that stand before.
We took that stand before, and, and we end up paying, we end up paying all the time, but, and-
We're the fifty percent payer, so if we have concerns, we gotta push as hard as we possibly can on the village board. Chris, you can do what you can as that member, but I think that's, I, I would be in support of, you know, a half payment. But I think it's gonna be tough, Chris, for you to go in that meeting, we just, I don't know, you know?
Why doesn't he walk in with the, with the check you're gonna cut? Do you actually cut a check to them, or do you, so why doesn't he walk in and hand them the check tomorrow night?
I would recommend that he walk in with a check of thirty thousand rather than twenty-nine. It just looks a little better. I know half is half, but, you know, it's, uh, just, if you're-
It's still, you know, we gotta look at our, our situation too from an audit finance standpoint, and-
Because frankly, we're, yeah, so-
We're gonna have to go out for a referendum probably in the fall.
Well, we, we're going to need a fall referendum because we will not be able to pay moving forward. But, in addition, we're going to have to most likely go out for a loan in order to pay for this for the remainder of the year. Now, how much that loan needs to be is what we can't determine right now because we don't have a budget.
What did we have, extra in for EMS, was it an extra like twenty-five?
We didn't have any, because remember, we-
We didn't have any extra.
We took money out, no.
Kept it the same, I thought we kept it the same.
No, we cut it.
By fifty, fifty grand.
Because you were trying to find the hundred thousand check?
Well, we, then we had the, was it almost a hundred thousand reserve?
Reserve what?
Reserve funds.
Where? Village Reserve funds?
I don't think we had any.
No, we, we cut the loan from three hundred thousand to two hundred, taking fifty thousand from what was budgeted from EMS in the past. So, in our budget, we cut fifty thousand from what we had previously been paying.
Yep.
Back to what we were paying in twenty-
No, fifty thousand less than what we were paying in twenty twenty-three.
In twenty twenty-three.
Well, I would suggest we go to three hundred, or three hundred, thirty thousand.
Now that that's out there.
Thirty thousand. But, you know, somebody wanna make a motion, and we-
You can make the motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, instruct the Lisa to write a check for thirty thousand dollars and give that to Chris so that he can bring that into the meeting that will be held with the fire and EMS tomorrow evening.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, where's, where's, where are the taxes? Where's it, where's it coming out of?
Yeah, right now, it's just coming out of taxes.
It is part of our budgeted amount for fire and EMS at this point, just later in the year.
At some point, it's gonna be depleted, right?
Once we get to third quarter, we'll have used up all that we have budgeted. So, come third quarter-
That's when we're gonna have to.
Where we have to do something to pay- We have to do something to pay for fire and EMS.
I swore there was like eighty to a hundred thousand in reserves. It was.
Because we wouldn't have had to take out the loan.
We might have had to take out the loan.
That's one of the reasons we dropped it.
No. Was to not have the three hundred thousand, to have two hundred instead.
I might have to look back at that.
We dropped it because there was pitchforks in the audience.
No, there was, I reasoned because there was like almost a hundred in reserves that we could access.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
So, so, sorry, Mark, my one comment on it is, when you're talking about the budget tomorrow, let them know that we don't want to be hard asses, but, but we are responsible to our constituencies, and, and that we need to have a budget from them, so we have enough an understanding of how much is this going to cost us for the full year, because we have to take out a loan, or we will not be able to pay them at all come third or fourth quarter.
I will convey that.
And they need to respect that, because now before, we're paying a larger share, so...
Well, they know that.
Yeah.
They didn't respect Oakland, so I don't anticipate they will respect us.
I'm a little upset about that, because if they did in fact respect the fact that we are paying the lion's share of it, we would have had a commission meeting to talk about this extra, extra pay that we would have, have to do, extra assessment.
Can you also request at the commission meeting that they set the next commission meeting date at that meeting?
That's a bridge too far, I can't do that. No more requests.
I, I think there's a lot of confusion about the budget, and the reason I'm saying that is, Lake Mills is meeting tonight, and on their agenda is discussion and approval of the fire commission budget for two thousand twenty-five. So how can they be approving a budget when you're saying you don't have one?
Because this Cambridge Board's position has been that the budget they gave us in January was a draft budget and not the budget they were asking for us for approval on. They were just giving it to us because they required in the IGA to give us something by the end of January.
Are they voting on the budget that was given to us on the floor?
No, no, no. I don't know what they are. So, so I don't know if they're, because other municipalities may think that that was the budget they were asked to vote on. So that's why they could maybe say they had a budget to vote on.
Okay, but if that's the case, Mr. Williams, whatever he presented is far different than the initial budget that was presented in January to the fire commission.
Correct. And I received an email today from one of the Lake Mills Board members, because he had forwarded us a document that apparently got sent to two or three municipalities and not us the night of the, the meeting. And he said, he forwarded me documents. One, it is a two thousand twenty-five EMS budget that says Cambridge EMS. And I'm not sure where they're getting that information from. And then he also forwarded me a document that is a Deer Grove EMS breakdown for a three-year budget, which I don't believe we ever received. But then there is a total fire and EMS commission budget, what they call draft, that suppose, that has all the other commission, well, kind of has the commission overhead. But nobody else has received that.
Yeah, you just got it because you asked.
I, I got, I, I said I was confused, because the, the information that we got from EMS that night was about sixty thousand dollars less than what the document that was forwarded to us, which was supposedly sent from EMS to the three, two or three other municipalities. Sounds like Rockville didn't get it. But I, I don't understand how in the course of two hours, they miraculously whacked off sixty grand.
Okay, is that the answer here? We have a motion, and we have a second to go ahead and have Lisa write a check for thirty thousand from the Village of Cambridge to the Cambridge Area Fire and EMS, and give it to Chris Brunink, and have that delivered tomorrow evening. Correct? That's what we have? Roll call, please.
Blackwood?
No.
Hall and Bass?
Yes.
Creckel?
Yes.
Ryanick?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Okay.
I want to give you some leverage for the meeting. That's what I'm doing.
I have to use everything I can.
Okay, we've got that. And that's, we've kind of talked about the first quarter invoice and the commission budget. Is there anything else in here?
I, I just want Kristen to know that your explanation, we're, we're, I understand the frustration. I understand that we're going around in circles with this budget. Hopefully tomorrow, we can get some more clarification over what is considered a draft to some municipalities and what is not, and give, I can give them some direction, thanks to the comments that are made here, on what our position is and what our expectations are. So...
If they could forward to me in actual, this is the budget we want the village to act on.
Well, Lisa, they send you all kinds of emails, and you just never get them.
Or don't.
Or don't, yeah.
I got you. I, I will definitely make sure.
Make it a formal...
I think you even have like two or three different, you have El Mohan at Cambridge, or Lisa, so...
They'd both come to me.
Okay. All right. I think we've, you've got it, and you're going to let us know what happens and...
Absolutely not.
Just, no, this is just, goes from bad to worse and worser.
And I guess one follow-up. If the amendment to the IGA were to pass tomorrow night, the direction was by the eighteenth to have board action to approve the resolution. So we would maybe be calling for a special meeting in the next week if...
Pretty short meeting, but still would be for that.
If it, if it does come out of the commission tomorrow night, there could be a special meeting to approve the resolution.
And I think that's why the closed session is on there, to discuss some of that, some of those nuances with it?
Yeah, and then it's later on you're going to talk.
And later on, we're going to talk about it.
Open, open session. So, so, so we're looking at either Friday the fourteenth, Monday the seventeenth, or, or Tuesday the eighteenth. What about Tuesday?
Friday's the only one that works for me, so...
Tuesday's Water and Sewer meeting.
I know, I was going to let you know that I...
You're not going to be able to make it?
I'll be in Troy speaking at an AI conference.
Oh, my God, okay.
Trust me, I don't want to go, so...
All right, that, that doesn't...
But Friday would work for me.
Can't you just do it via AI?
You didn't do any code?
I'll take that on the next, next rounds.
Set it up and...
What was it?
We could do it via Zoom if we needed to. For the meeting.
That might work.
Instead of people having to come here, if that would make it better?
If, if that works, let me, yeah, that could work. Monday would be better than Tuesday.
Depends what time Monday.
Anytime on Monday works, because I'll be in Eastern time, so it works fine.
I have, I have a wine tasting on Monday at one.
In honesty, we just need a majority.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Because we have directed Chris to vote, we, yeah.
I mean, we kind of already voted on what we think, so, okay, but...
So what do we think on Tuesday?
Mon, I mean, or Monday would be fine.
Monday? Monday good?
Predictably, it's a call-in. It's a call-in Monday, that'd be great.
I guess personally for staffs, unless it's going to be earlier, I'd rather do Tuesday because we work until six.
Can we do Monday at noon? Everybody take your lunch hour? No?
I can try, I don't necessarily get a same time lunch hour.
Oh, you don't, okay.
I can try.
What time do you get off work?
Mon, Monday will be, should be done by four-thirty.
Chuck, are you around, or?
I'll be on Monday, Tuesday.
I can do my best to, if we're doing it like via Zoom or Teams or something.
Tuesday at five, it's during working hours, we're not staying.
What time does the Water Sewer meeting start?
Could you do Tuesday at five?
On Tuesday, I forget.
Tuesday is bad, I'm speaking, Monday I can make it work.
Water Sewer sits six-thirty.
Is it six-thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so before that would work.
Yeah.
So, so...
Just for us to stay two extra hours to do a five-minute meeting, or, you know, one of us.
Let me know, let me know, and I'll try and make whatever I can.
Okay, well, you know, we can't make it.
Tuesday's going to be really hard.
We'll still have a majority, and I think we kind of know where you stand on it, Brian.
Fair enough.
Well, staff gets done at noon on Friday.
Monday, it's, I would have to cancel something, so I could do it, or Tuesday. Just, I, you know, what do we want to do, just...
And it's going to depend on what happens tomorrow, it may be moved if it doesn't.
Tuesday, like at six-fifteen, and we're done by six-thirty?
Yeah, why not?
Does that work?
Yeah.
Tuesday would work.
Tuesday, six-fifteen?
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to come here, you can, otherwise...
And then you can stay for Water Sewer?
Yeah, and then you can stay for Water Sewer.
I'm just offering that to all of you.
That sounds riveting.
Because we get to hear about budgets.
If that's when you make it, can you send me a Zoom invite, and I will let you know if I can make it or not?
Yeah, and we'll see if we can work that out.
Do we have?
We have enough for a forum.
If it's a Zoom invite, I bring my laptop with me, we can all crowd around my laptop and conduct it if we need to, so...
Would Brian be?
It's one thing.
We don't have it where he could have somebody else vote for him, you know?
No, but he could call in to vote, we allow that, so...
Yeah.
It wouldn't have to be a Zoom.
Even if we didn't do a Zoom.
That's what I mean, send me the phone or call in, and I'll let you know.
It wouldn't have to be Zoom, we could just call in.
I just don't know on Tuesday, there's this...
You could do your vote via AI.
Yeah, well, you might be, you might be required...
Be careful with that, Chris, that could be in...
Are we doing ambient listening too, or are we...
Your speakers, you may be required to do the Zoom.
No, it's the real person, flesh and blood, right here.
Okay, all right, so you're going to, you're going to let us know.
We'll see what happens tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
I think Tuesday is.
Okay.
Take Tuesday.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Is there anything else? All right, moving on. Correspondence. I don't see anything that we're supposed to read, so we're going to move right through that. Questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items?
I got one. Shaun, the, the budget that we went through, the two thousand twenty-four projected year-end excess showed eighty-seven, eighty-seven thousand and eight dollars, told that was going to be in reserves. So if we could have a agenda item for another meeting, seeing if we could dip into that.
We will have a much better idea by next week when we have everything ready for the auditors.
Okay, I'm just saying, I didn't make that up. That was part of the rationale for the going down to two hundred dollars.
So the, the, again, we have enough money budgeted if we have to pay what they're asking us. We have enough money budgeted that to get us through the first two quarters. So it's the third quarter when we have to pay that bill that we're going to have to make a decision. So we have a couple months to decide, and that will help us, because we'll know if we have to go out for a loan.
Right, that, but, there was that eighty-seven thousand left over, maybe that could be utilized.
But eighty-seven thousand isn't even to pay one, one of those two quarters, Chuck.
Well, it could pay for some of it. I'm saying, I just want to point that out, that that was, that was listed as going to excess into this year.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else still? Okay, upcoming meetings. We've got a grouping here. March twelfth is Library Board, eighteenth Water and Sewer, March twenty-fifth Village Board. There's an election on April first, and then, Chris, you're going to be seeing the Cambridge Area Fire and EMS tomorrow evening.
That's correct.
Sorry, the, I can't go, because I've got Library Board. Sorry, staff stuff, the invoice for the bike path, the, the list of contracts. Those are still on your to-do list that you'll bring back, okay?
The auditor, I didn't, I forgot to bring that up. They stated as part of the audit process, they'll have a, a whole list of all of our contracts.
Okay.
Yes, we do, let's give them contracts.
Outgoing and incoming?
So I should...
Both what we pay out and what we receive in?
Yeah. Because I had stated that I wanted a spreadsheet of all bills,
Yep.
and then whether they're monthly, quarterly, so on.
Yeah, we do give them copies of contracts.
So, but they said they'll have it all put together, and they'll have a template for me to get started.
Right.
So, and then I spent hours trying to get you a bike trail invoice. There's so much information to go through. Judy just found another folder that was the previous treasurer's. And so I'm going to look through that and see if there's something...
Because I thought there was a dollar amount we had at some point in time.
We did have, we had, and you found on that computer, we do have a spreadsheet. There was some discrepancy on, I believe, donations where it was like twenty-five thousand dollars different what I had compared to what Town and Country had.
And it wasn't updated for quite, for at least over a year.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, but we are working on it.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
I promise.
A lot of it has come up during the audit stuff as we're looking at stuff.
I, I have looked for you, like for, I just haven't...
Because if we could get them to pay that, what Cambridge overpaid, if we could get the bike trail people to pay that, I mean, that twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars makes a difference for the Village of Cambridge right now.
For sure.
So...
Yeah, for sure.
Super.
Okay, all right. That takes us all the way up to item thirteen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I oppose. We're done.